Get somebody to move a motion to receive that correspondence. Counselor Main, seconded by Counselor Broton, all in favor? Period.
Hang on. Sorry, I was. This next thing?
Yeah, so we just received them. Nelson Broton and then all in favor, yes.
Nelson Broton?
Yes. And would anybody like to pull any of those documents? Counselor Main?
Yes, I would like to pull the New Denver and Area Housing Society garbage bin request and the Slack updated request.
Okay, and would you like to speak on those now?
Yeah, so, um, the New Denver and Area Housing Society is looking for a large garbage bin for the ten-unit housing project uh in New Denver and we have, I believe we have four of them that we're not using. And, um, if indeed that's the case, I I would be amenable to accepting their offer of three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, including delivery and unload for one of those bins. They all are used bins. We purchased them used and we're not able to use them at this time. So. I'd like discussion first, but then I would.
So would you?
Sure, I'll move, I'll move that we accept the New Denver and Area Housing Society offer of three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, including delivery and unloading for one used garbage bin.
Do I have a second? Counselor Denbo? And discussion? Counselor Mills?
I'd like to have an opinion from staff uh that we for sure will not have a use for that bin. Uh, I have no problem helping out. But based on that cost, if we have, have to replace it, then we're paying a lot more. Just like to have staff's opinion.
Counselor Main?
Yeah, uh, the, these are the bins that uh we are, are not using and have not been able to come up with a plan for their use uh up until now. So certainly I would like to hear what Public Works has to uh add to the discussion.
Any other discussion?
Did they ever get emptied?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a definitely.
So Public Works, current Public Works has no idea what historically has been done here, so we might have to go somehow beyond Public Works to get the answer to that question. I agree, I agree, we should look into whether or not we might need to keep them, want to keep them, but how to do that, I'd have to go beyond Public Works.
Okay.
Can we um hold off till the CEO is back in office and then ask the CEO or get a word to her? We're okay with releasing one?
Friendly amendment for that? Does that work? Yeah. So friendly amendment to ask the staff?
Including the CEO?
Including the CEO, if this is possible?
Or whether there is a plan?
Yeah.
For using them?
Okay.
If not, then.
I'll let you continue. Maybe have to ask the staff, including the CEO, whether there is a plan for these bins, for the garbage bins, yes. Okay. And all in favor? Period. And then Ms. Slack?
Slack has sent us a letter uh asking for our letter of support for a CBT grant that they are applying for, and they also circulated some information uh this afternoon that went to all of council that goes into more detail about the administration and organization of the project. It is part of the project to renovate the Silverton Gallery. Um, they're applying for another grant that will help pay for the designs and renovations. The deadline for applying for the grant was May ninth, but um CBT was aware that they would potentially be getting letters of support after that date, but they did submit the application. And um they offered that uh the letter of support could be based on our previous letter of support to them for a different grant. So I would like to move that we send a letter of support for the grant that is stipulated in your letter.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
Counselor Mills? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Period. Okay, on to council reports. My report's attached. I really have nothing to add. Other than it's been a very busy month.
Good well.
Uh, on to my second one there, the HR Hiring Committee. Just a little bit of background information on that. As everybody's aware, we don't have um job descriptions in place at the moment. And to help our CAO out and get the process moving a little bit faster to hire proper employees, I think it's, it's wise for council to maybe give her a hand so we can get this on the, on the go. What this entails, just looking at the staffing requirements and, and various HR issues coming up. I'm thinking maybe a mayor, one council member and uh the CAO, and we can work together. Um, do I have a volunteer from council to sit on the committee? Counselor Broton?
If you're willing.
Okay, I'll work with you with that and then we'll make a fine going forward. Is everybody?
Are you, are you doing that as a, just as a volunteer thing and after you've sorted out a little bit?
Yes, it'll all, all come back in council. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, Counselor Main's report.
So I did circulate uh my report and um it's pretty lengthy like usual. But I also brought from AKBLG, I brought notebooks.
My, I already have. These were.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you.
They were at the, the trade show that's associated with the convention. And um if anybody has any questions about my report, I'm happy to answer them. Some of it is regional district, some of it is Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and some of it is you know, the, the conference that I went to, so. Uh, and I included the speaking notes that I used. Um, I was invited to address the AKBLG, Associated Canadian Boundary Local Governments, on behalf of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And I had about ten minutes to speak. I shared my speaking notes. And that's all.
Counselor Denbo?
Can I add something to that? I was there with Leah the whole time. Um, and I just want to commend Leah and let everybody here know how well respected Leah is in that circle. There were like a hundred and fifty people there and Leah, so many of them know Leah by name, warmly um connected with Leah, respect her. It was just beautiful to watch the whole thing and people here have no idea what how well connected and the kind of networking she does in the Apple Village and just in general, yeah, the group. So it's really quite something. It was fun to be there with her. So I was proud of her.
Thank you.
Counselor Mills, do you have anything to further report?
Uh, other than to say that I did attend the New Denver Fire Services meeting with the mayor April twelfth, I see, looking at your report, I can't recall, but uh I thought that meeting was a great networking for us to kind of rebuild relationships as well with some of those involved, the fire services, and the plan is to attend those meetings every year and see where we're at, see what kind of budget they have. Their stock, they're putting money away for future, which um is obviously a good plan to update their gear. Well, that's all I was up to minus the multiple meetings we've had the last few weeks.
Counselor Denbo?
Good to have you back and working more actively on council. I have, yeah, a comment that I'd like to make on Counselor Mills's uh report. The, we get our emergency management services through the regional district and there's been, they've been going through an evolution lately that previously there were local government representatives on that committee, but then they decided it was supposed to be an operational committee, so they didn't want local government elected officials on it, and then last week they just, they, they got some feedback on that. And the local government elected officials are being invited back onto that committee, so uh I will make sure that Counselor Mills gets uh all of the correspondence at that time. I was held on that committee as alternate to the Silverton CAO who just was not able to make the meetings, and so I was making, you know, keeping that relationship going on behalf of the village, but Counselor Mills will be back on it as well now.
And Counselor Denbo, did you have a?
No report, no, I attended the same AKBLG with, with Leah, as I just said, it was awesome to be there and really glad that the village responded me to go. In terms of the lessons I learned and things to bring to the village, well, that will all, you know, sort of evolve over time. Or under fruition over time, if I stick around.
And Counselor Broton, did you have anything?
Well, I don't have any committees or anything yet, but I am learning. Have you been wondering why I closed this? You use it for two hours when the battery's at about two-thirds, you better plug it in. Mine died, but no, uh, I've been liking the uh, the fact that some people are stopping by and saying hi and telling me what they think about life and uh hoping that you're so far happy with our job and be patient with us uh if you're not, because it takes a while. Other than that, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting on committee, but at the moment I'm not, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, on to the administration reports. Um, can I get somebody to receive the report for the five-year financial plan? Counselor Main? Any discussion?
Talking about this, but furthering the bylaws, but any discussion?
No, all in favor? Period. Uh, the staff report for the Village of Silverton twenty twenty-four tax rate, can I get somebody to move that report? Counselor Mills, seconded by Counselor Broton, all in favor? Period. Uh, can I get somebody to move the Silverton Garbage Collection and Disposal Rate Report? Counselor Denbo, seconded by Counselor Main? All in favor? Period. Those are all received? Yes. And the staff report on the Village of Silverton water rates, can I get somebody to move that? Counselor Main, seconded by Counselor Mills, all in favor? Council appointments and acting mayor's schedule. There doesn't seem to be too, too much that has to change on the council appointments here, um unless somebody wants to give up a seat to get Counselor Broton into one of the positions. Um, I see we have the outgoing Mayor Ferguson on the CBBC. Is that even still going, Leah? Do you know?
Um, it's pending.
Okay.
But it's not active right now. So um I would suggest that uh you might be in, you know, but in a good position to.
Okay.
Because you'll get any.
Information?
About it.
Okay. Counselor Mills?
If Counselor Broton would like to take over, there's no kind of arena society and I'm, I'd like to be the alternate.
That'd be no problem, yeah, sure, do that together.
Counselor Denbo?
I overheard you talking about the library um uh committee.
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if that's a correct name for it, but uh I'm on it. And I got the impression from little I heard from you that you're much more familiar with that whole scene than I am. I know you have a lot on your plate, but if you want that, you're welcome to it. And I don't, I don't have a lot. I'm happy to keep doing it, but if you feel like you need a better job and you want it, you're welcome to it.
I could take the, the lead and you can be the alternate if that works for you. Okay. Counselor Main?
Yeah, Slocan District Chamber of Commerce Health Committee, that was myself and Mayor Ferguson. Uh, it meets infrequently, but I would happily give that up to someone else.
Okay. That's actually one that I wouldn't mind sitting on, so I wouldn't mind sitting as lead for that one. Which one's that? The Health Committee? And did you still want to be the alternate or?
Um, I, I would like to give that up completely.
Counselor Denbo, did you? Okay.
A, a lot of the other ones that I sit on are by, they've come with being the regional district.
Okay.
Person.
Sounds good. And all the rest of them, okay? We have to adopt that?
We could just.
We could just adopt it and call it. Good.
What about the um acting mayor's schedule, which is on there?
Right, okay, so October, November, December was left open for the new council seats, so those would be filled by Counselor.
Counselor Broton could do the, because we do three months.
Yeah, yeah.
So October, November, December.
Stay healthy, eh?
Okay, so can I get somebody to move the motion to accept those changes? Counselor Denbo, Counselor Mills?
Our second.
And all in favor? Period. So next is the Village of Nacusp Water Sampling Service Contract. Um, I think we're just receiving that for information. The campground contract is on there. It has been advertised in the Local Valley Voice. We're hoping that we'll get lots of applications and we'll go from there. Can I get somebody to move the motion for the permit application for the Camp Cafe patio? Counselor Denbo, seconded by Counselor Main, discussion?
Um, Counselor? Just a, a moment while it, while it comes up on my screen, I have a couple of questions about it. And um they're, they're not meant to uh stop anything in its tracks. I have concern over the amount, the percentage of the lot that will be covered by impermeable uh materials, because we don't have storm sewers. So I just want to uh, you know, raise that as a um, you know, a question in my mind about whether that has been uh fully considered and where does that sit in relation to the septic and drain field for the uh cafe? And I don't believe I saw the drain field and septic marked on the uh lot, the plot plan drawings.
I can see that just from what I, from what I know about where the septic is there. They are, I understand they're putting a new septic system in there and, and the patio seemed, from what I can tell, is going to the back of the building. And there's still a huge swath of that property, the full, I would say, close to fifty percent of that property extends beyond the back of the patio and the back of the buildings to the, to Elfa Lane. The septic is back there. And there's somebody here who would know more about that than me, uh if, if we need to corroborate that. And that, that is all just garden, garden and lawn back there.
Question through, through the chair, has, have those, have those two lots been consolidated? Or are they still listed as separate lots?
It's not something I can answer, but.
Okay.
I will turn it on to the CAO and we can.
Okay.
Question, but.
Because our, our, our building permit by law, whichever by law that is zoning or building stipulates that um a, 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 a building cannot occupy more than thirty-five percent of the lot area. It doesn't speak to uh driveways, paved patios, et cetera. But I, I just want to uh speak my concern about that. The reason that we have it, that thirty-five percent limitation is specifically because we don't have storm sewers. So any runoff when it hits an impermeable surface can create problems. So I, 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 I intend to, to vote to approve the development permit, but I just want.
Some clarification.
So, yeah.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? All discretion, all in favor? Period. Thank you. And we'll find out that information if you have it. Okay, on to the bylaws. Uh, can I get somebody to move the motion, uh, the Village of Silverton? First, second, and third readings be given for the five-year financial plan by law number five forty-three twenty twenty-four. Counselor Main? Seconded by Counselor Broton, any discussion? Counselor Main?
Um, I just would like to say to the CFO that I really appreciate the format that we're getting these in with the bylaw rationale statement as a cover page to each of them. It really um helps keep everything orderly in my mind, so thank you for that. And thank you for putting the bylaws together.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Mills?
On the ten, on Friday, are we not doing three readings?
We are doing the first three readings of the tax rate by law on Friday, and then we'll adopt it on Monday. We're gonna adopt these bylaws on Friday. We're doing the first three readings today and adopting on Friday.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on the tax or the five-year financial plan? All in favor? Period. Onto the next by law, uh, that the Village of Silverton, nope, I'm just gonna skip that one, sorry, I'm gonna move that one to Friday. So the Village of Silverton Garbage and Collection, Garbage Collection and Disposal Amendment by law number five forty-five twenty twenty-four, amending the Village of Silverton garbage collection rates be given its first, second, and third readings. Do you move that motion, Counselor Main? Counselor Broton, second? Any discussion? Counselor Denbo?
This is for future reference, but I want to bring it up now since it's uh kind of an opportunity to do that. I think the commercial rates for, for garbage and, and for water, they're the same for a tiny little business like um Megan across the road. She has no garbage as they are for silver and building supplies, and we generate an embarrassing amount of garbage. And, and embarrassing amount of garbage. I, I wish, how can we make a note that that comes up in discussion for, at some point? Let's, let's make a note of that.
Let's make a note of that and talk about it at a later meeting.
Same goes for, for water.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, we'll make a note of that and I'll bring that up to another meeting. Do I need to make a note of that? No, okay. Yeah. Okay, so any further discussion on the garbage collection rates? All in favor? Period. So we're on to the water and regulations and management by law, oh, five forty-six twenty twenty-four, first, second, and third reading. I guess somebody move that motion. Counselor Denbo, seconded by Counselor Mills? Any discussion? Counselor Main?
Yeah, further to uh Counselor Denbo's sidebar about the garbage. Um, again, the commercial rates, water rates are the same pretty much regardless of the size of the business. And there's a part of me that really wishes we were metered so that at, you know, particularly the business section of town could be paying for what they use.
You mean water or garbage?
Water. Yeah.
Or both?
Okay, anyway, it's, it's something that we should, that we need to discuss, I think.
Okay, we can add that to the list of things to talk. Yep. Okay, any further discussion on the water regulation by law? All in favor? Period. And just for the public, I realize now that we didn't actually tell you what the rates are. Um, the property tax increase will be eight percent. The water increase is six percent and our garbage rate is two percent. And what we have done this year is we have rolled over our taxes from last year. Our CFO was just coming on board and didn't have enough time to go over everything. So we are just gonna roll over last year's operational budget and amend by law, or amend the budget as we need to keep it over the year. Onto public input. Any questions? Sure?
Um, I'd like to have clarification on the Camp, um, Camp Cafe, um, so they want a patio, but is that in front of the cafe? Is it, does it, do they own that property?
It's, it's off to the side of the building. So it's along the same, so the, right, Camp Cafe's next, and it's right next.
On the other side of the, not on the main highway, but on the side.
It's on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Yeah. Jen?
Can you go the garbage collection water rates files be on the website somewhere? I didn't see any agenda package tonight.
They will be, uh, the bylaws are actually on there now, yes.
They are, right.
Yes. Yes.
When is campground opening and who will be maintaining and supervising it?
We are in the process of hiring a campground.
But when is it opening?
It is open now.
Of that's right.
Yes, it opened on May first.
So who is, who is taking care of it?
In the interim time, we have our staff looking after it.
Yes. The current.
We have a variety of people helping out.
Okay, I met someone at Creekside who said he was, had been hired.
Yes.
Full-time to be a maintenance person, he's from Nacusp.
Yes.
So are the jobs that are being advertised?
He is just a temporary worker at the moment?
He is.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Uh, with the bear season approaching and so forth and people are coming into their summer homes, is uh, uh, and when they leave on a Sunday, uh, is there any place that there's an open bin that they can take their garbage to, or are they all closed?
I know there is a, a bin at the campground that is open all the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and also too, um, when will the taxpayers know how much this is costing us to have somebody down the, uh, the cusp to look after the water?
We're in the process of, yeah, we're in the process of trying to switch that back over to our staff at the moment.
And will the public uh know their, uh, what it was costing?
The contract's online. Yeah, on the agenda package, it's attached to this agenda package. Any further questions? Any questions online? Seeing. Oh, yep. Let's go.
Right, on the cusp costing. A day.
For water or what are you talking?
Your employee.
The employee. I'm actually unsure of that information at the moment.
Very much. You work for that council?
I'm actually unsure of that at the moment, too. All I know is he's a temporary hire for us to get us through some, some troubled times to hire properly.
Talk to him and tell him, Joe, are you in the building? He says, I don't.
Okay.
But he does recognize that I have initials on the home notes. Well, who owns Nikas?
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it. Right now, he's just filling out until we can get our feet on the ground.
He drives like seven, he drives like 75 kilometers a day to get here. Well, if he's worked for Nikas, there will be a term of honor, right?
I would imagine. I have not seen a contract yet. It's.
He's going to charge one, and how much he's paid, you know her. I know what you guys paid me. But he has a problem with this, you know? He comes along.
Okay.
You can do that for your point about some help.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Scott. We're trying to get these, these jobs advertised as quick as we can. That's why we've got this HR committee in place. We will be advertising, yes. 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 Oh, absolutely. I know there's a lot of people interested. Yeah. Okay.
And okay, okay, for her to know, she will answer her email.
I'm well aware. We are working through some issues, and we're trying to get back on our feet. I, I would ask the public to just be patient with, with us and with our staff, because we're, we're walking through some troubled times.
Oh, hold on, what, who are you paying this guy?
I don't know about that. Any other further question? Any further question?
I'm just wondering if you went to the Dallas, like, is it going to be approved?
It's supposed to be in, in the next week, so we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed. Until then, I've been preprised. Yes, yes, I agree. Judith?
Am I to understand that council will now be working input by committee with the CAO in terms of hiring?
No, we're going to get in place some job descriptions so she can properly hire.
Okay, so council has no input into the actual hiring process?
No.
As her job description is set up at the moment, or as is expected for all CAOs, CAOs, everywhere, do the hiring?
CEO, yeah, CEO is everywhere, do the hiring.
I need a clarification.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Which council I would recall sooner recently?
It'll be me and Counselor Broton. Any further questions? Last question.
The council, isn't the council in, in charge of the CAO?
Yes.
Is it the boss of?
Yes, yes, we're, we have one, council has an employee of one, the CAO. The CAO holds all the other employees underneath her. We have no say in those people. Okay.
A clarification on that? We can establish the job descriptions, but the CAO is responsible for hiring and, and supervising.
But you have, but you have, okay, say she wants John Brown, for instance. Okay, and she presents it to you, she presents it to the council. You have a state that will go.
Nope. Nope.
Nope.
Well, then what's, what's with the council then?
We manage the CAO.
Counselor Denbok?
We, we can provide input, like advertising locally and some guidelines like that.
Yes.
In general, we can provide that kind of input, but we don't micromanage the CAO. That's a job that hires her to do.
So where did this guy come from?
I have no idea.
He comes from 75 kilometers a day each week.
Yeah. Like I said, we're, yeah, and I'm very well aware that we're trying to work through some issues. Scott, I totally get where you're coming from, but we're trying to work. Yeah.
That's the hard, he's not going to drive here from Nikas, he's going to get a lot of.
Okay, well, we'll look into that.
He knows too much. He's not a free person.
Okay, well, thank you for that input, and I will look into it.
And it was not advertised.
Okay. Yes, I, yeah, I'm aware. We're aware. Yeah, we're aware. We're going to get those jobs advertised. Okay, with that, no further. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Counselor Mainz, seconded by Counselor Denbok. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Please have a chance out to you tomorrow.